I'd like to welcome everyone to the Morganton City Council. It's April 4th, 2011. At this time, I'd call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invitations. Steve?
We have something that's specially important tonight. Our thoughts and prayers are for Japan. It's hard to picture in our minds the detail and the hurt that must be there and that God is calling upon the Aishos to participate in doing what we can do to help alleviate that condition. Prayers and thoughts all across the country and the world are being offered in behalf of Japan, and I thought we ought to do that tonight. Just have a silent prayer with all you participating and just lift up our prayers for Japan and whatever, you know, help we can think about that Japan might need. So would you be together with me now as we pray silently in behalf of this needy country? Let us pray. Our Father God, we pray you'll hear our prayers and you use each one of us to do what we're, we can do to bring answer to the needs of Japan. Show us the way, Lord, and help us to do what we need to do. Amen.
Thank you, Steve.
My thought, I had a thought tonight that I'd like to hold before you. How would it be to be the city council in Libya or Egypt? How would we bring about peace if we were over there? The Bible declares that there shall peace, peace everywhere, and there isn't peace and so on. My message in a sentence is that peace is not totally bringing the world around to certain conditions, but peace is the presence of the God who created us within our lives being peace. The presence of God within us is love and joy and peace. And I may be way out in left field, but it seems to me that there's much division in America too and need here for our, our being what only God can enable us to be, to be an instrument of peace wherever we are. I brought this prayer, you've probably heard this prayer before, of St. Francis. You may not believe in saints, but this is a wonderful prayer and maybe we just be in Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there's hatred, let me sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there's despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. Help us, oh God, each one of us, to be an instrument of thy peace wherever we are. Amen.
Steve, thank you, Steve. Introduction of our city council. On my far right, Dr. Alfred Hamer, city councilman. Forrest Fleming, city councilman. Steve Suttermeyer, city attorney. I'm Mel Cohen, mayor. Sally Sandy, city manager. Larry Wistnut, city councilman. John Cantrell, city councilman. Kelly Russell, recording secretary. And Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community, and a lot of them are with us tonight. I want to thank them for being here. Michael Pearson. Michael, would you come to? I'm going to read a resolution honoring Michael Pearson. Whereas Michael R. Pearson was employed by the city of Morganton as sanitation laborer in the sanitation department on December 21, 1981. Promoted to equipment operator one on December 29, 1983. Transferred to public works department on December 29, 1997. And whereas Michael R. Pearson was, has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the public works department and has given his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 30 years and three months. And whereas Michael R. Pearson retired from the city of Morganton as equipment operator one in the public works department on April 1, 2011. And whereas Morganton city council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Michael Pearson and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore, be resolved by the city of Morganton, mayor present this resolution to Michael Pearson, adopted this the fourth day of April 2011. Mel Cohen, mayor, and Sally W. Sandy, city clerk. Michael? Awfully young to be retired. Scott's been good to you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he has.
That's good. You can tell us a little bit about, no?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
People like Michael has worked in the city for so many years and done so many good things when the weather was inclement and, and helped us out in all kinds of debris, storms, whatever, and we greatly appreciate him being with us tonight, and we wish you well, Michael. Marilyn. Would you come over here? Marilyn Waters. I remember when she came to work. Give you your 30-year pin. People, 13th, 1981.
Thank you.
Public advocacy issues and strategies, alcohol awareness month, 2011 proclamation. Jim, you can come to the mic and I'm going to read a resolution and present it to you. This one here's fine, right here. Alcohol Awareness Month 2011, Burke Council on Alcoholism and Chemical Dependency Incorporated. Whereas alcohol use by persons under the age of 21 is illegal, and alcohol-related legal offenses can affect a young person's ability to get a job or scholarship. And whereas alcohol is the most commonly used and abused drug among youth under 21 with almost 11 million underage drinkers in the United States. And whereas young people who begin drinking before age 15 are four times more likely to develop a dependency on alcohol than those who begin drinking after the age of 21. And whereas alcohol abuse and dependency can severely impair brain development in young people and can affect their ability to succeed in school and at work and can damage relationships with family and friends. And whereas alcohol plays a role in risky sexual activity that can lead to teen pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. And whereas alcohol-related accidents are the number one killer of teens and young adults. And whereas there, there is help available for young people who want to address their use, abuse, dependency of alcohol. Now therefore, I, Mel Cohen, mayor, join the Burke Council on Alcoholism and Chemical Dependency in proclaiming April 2011 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Morganton and Burke County. As the mayor of Morganton, I can, I also call upon all citizens, parents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, hospitals, schools, and colleges in Burke County to support efforts that increase community awareness, understanding, and action to address underage drinking in our community and thereby help young people have a better opportunity for good health and success in life. Mel Cohen, mayor, in the form of a motion, council.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Right.
I want to present this to you, and you're welcome to say anything you want to. Do you want John one? You don't want that? Maybe we'll both do that. Can we get a picture?
Sure.
On behalf of the Burke Council, I want to thank the Morganton City Council for your support, and as we work with other providers and members of the healthcare community and agencies in this community to build a healthier Burke County, we appreciate your help and support in that endeavor. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. Anything I can do, let us know.
Well, thank you.
This afternoon at 4:30, I participated with about 15 young people in the Clean City Committee poster contest. City Morganton's Clean City Committee, which is, goes hand in hand with our Community Apairance Commission, in keeping with the theme of Keep Morganton Beautiful, sponsored a poster contest at local elementary schools with the theme of recycling. Participants were encouraged to show what recycling means to them and why we should recycle and how they can best encourage others to recycle. The other larger purpose is to continue the ongoing education about the need in this community and in Burke County to recycle and the preservation of our natural resources for future generations. That took place at 4:30. We had a room full of young people and parents and grandparents. I want to thank them for being here. And Scott, thank you for working with them, and I think Russ Cochran also works with them. Want to mention the Citizen of the Year. Human Relations Commission is sponsoring again the 2011 Citizen of the Year. The city council, we all went totally last year. Banquet is April 25th at the Morganton Community House. That's a Tuesday at 6:00 PM. It'd be good for all of-
April 26.
April 26. Yeah, I'm sorry. Read it wrong, didn't I? One eye, one good eye and one bad eye. We all need to go like we did last year and need, need to let Diane know or Cheryl know in the Human Relations Department.
That's Tuesday, April 26.
Yeah, April 26. Ben Belton's here. Ben had a fabulous article on, on his second story condos in the News Herald this morning, and I want to congratulate you again. His award at the Main Street Convention in Shelby. We all went to see him and Liba, received the award. The accolades for Main Street, Ben, that you gave are fabulous. It's a shame that more people in our community are not aware of what Main Street really does, and maybe the message can get, when people read this, message can get to people and, and call people like yourself that have been in Morganton most of your adult life and, or all of your adult life, and maybe we can pass that message on because I think there are a lot of people that have forgotten what Main Street means to this community. Again, I want to thank you and Liba for your, for what you've done for downtown. Think that's all of mine, Sally.
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. Consent agenda.
Okay. The consent agenda before you tonight includes five individual items. The staff would ask that you consider those in one motion unless somebody would like for something to be taken off and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, the five items include two sets of minutes, a regular set enclosed session from March the 7th, tax releases in the amount of $1,355.43, approval of the 2011 downtown calendar of events, a budget amendment in the amount of $50,000, which is reducing our budget, that is the DOT project that is about to happen in downtown. DOT will let those contracts and handle that, and the money will not flow through us. And then $45,000 budget amendment in wastewater, and that is to recognize $45,000 for sale of surplus centrifuges and to allot that money to pay for the lime slurry contract that you approved last month.
Make a motion and we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Of the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Under appearances, Burke County Rescue Squad. Please go to that microphone over there and state your name and where you reside, sir.
Thank you for letting us come before you tonight. My name is Jeff Weller. I live at 114 Piercey Avenue out near Sunnyside. This is Cameron Taylor. He resides here in Morganton, and Wendell Jackson, he resides down in Drexel. Wendell is our chairman of our board of directors. I'm the chief, and Cameron is the assistant chief at Burke County Rescue Squad. We came before you tonight to kind of give you all an update of what we're doing, where we're at, and where we've got our sights ongoing. There's always been two rescue squads in the county since back in the 50s, Burke County and Eastern Burke. About 10 years ago, they started operating under the management of one board. Well, we finally merged together and we are one organization now managed by one board. We've changed all the legal requirements with Secretary of State as far as the merger, getting the board and our bylaws reorganized and trying to set it up more like a fire department instead of the way rescue squads were set up back in the 50s. It's just more efficient to do business that way. We were primarily funded over the years through donations. We did sold hamburgers, hot dogs, just whatever it took to get money to do the job. We were funded by United Way up until about six, seven years ago, and they felt like that was something, what we did was a rescue function, that it needed to be funded by the municipalities. The county has been funding us since that time because we, donations, then the economic status just will not support what we're obligated to do by contract. General statutes have changed. They've come up with standards that you have to train to. We have a confined space class that's going to start in September. It's going to be right, how many, about 70 hours worth of training. The new technical rescuer standards, that's what we're striving to meet. The confined spaces that we have here in the city limits is Great Lakes Carbon and some of the other industries have confined spaces that, you know, we have the equipment that if there's an emergency in those areas, we'll have trained people and equipment to go in and handle those emergencies as they arise. We also provide a first responder service inside the city limits of Morganton. That's one of the things that we've, it's hard for us to provide because out of 20-some people, only three of our members live inside the city limits of Morganton, and it's not really efficient for one of our members that lives on the McDowell County line to try to run all the way down here to run a first responder call. But we're striving to, as we grow and get more funding, to hire some people that'll work during the day, during the week, to where we can respond to more of these first responder calls. Currently, our first responder district is just part of the city. It's from the bypass in. Anything from the bypass out, there's a couple first responder groups, Oak Hill and Glen Alpine will come down into the bypass on 70 and 181, I guess that's North Green Street now, but Catawba Meadows, Kmart, Walmart, those are gray areas that don't have any first responder coverage. We've proposed a contract to Mark, and the last time I talked to him, he forwarded that to Ms. Sandy and Mr. Suttermeyer about expanding our first responder district out to the contiguous city limits. We don't want to do the satellite stuff, but we would like to go out to cover Catawba Meadows, to cover Walmart in Western Piedmont and some of these areas that are in gray no man's land. Last year in 2010, we responded to just in the city, 884 calls, and that's how many we were dispatched to. We had a lot of no responses, which was 462, but those were mainly the medical calls, first responder calls. Our primary concern is the rescues that we're dispatched to, and when Burke County EMS doesn't have any ambulances to send, they call us and we send one of ours. We have responded to each and every one of those calls. But as far as running first responder calls, that's kind of, they come in and you kind of got to make a judgment call where you're at, whether you can go or not. But would like to ask you all, if you could help us out any at all, we would really appreciate it. If you can't, we understand that too. And we would just, if you all have any questions for us, we'd kind of like to open the door and just kind of start a dialogue between us and the city. We're going to be doing the same thing with the city of Valdez and the city of Glen Alpine. Just to have an open dialogue so we can have input from you all to help guide us as we grow.
Any questions, Wendell?
Does the county fund anything for you?
Jeff, that's Jeff.
Our budget right now is, we receive $70,000 a year from the county.
Are you going to continue to get that maybe?
We'll find out here in a couple weeks. I mean, this is just our, we don't have a specific line item. That's one of my goals, is to try to get set up like a fire department and actually go through the process where we can put it before the people of the county to be voted on, to create a rescue district just like you would for Oak Hill Fire Protection District, George Hill to Brandon Fire Protection District, and establish a tax base to help fund us. To give people an idea of what we're talking about, you know, most fire departments are about four cents on the hundred, and they generate for just a small area, they'll generate between 900, 90,000 to $150,000. Some of the bigger districts and bigger departments will generate more than that, and they have a little bit lower tax base. But if we made all of Burke County a rescue district for us to do confined space, the specialty stuff, you know, there's other departments that do vehicle extrication, but that's it. They don't do the high angle, the low angle, confined space, swift water, that's what we do. And if you were to establish a half cent on the hundred tax base, it would give us probably, in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $350,000 a year. Right now, at $70,000 a year, what they've been doing, we've had to decommission three trucks. We can't afford to fix them. We need to maintain our equipment. We need to buy equipment that's damaged. The rescue that I was involved in back two years ago where we pulled the climber 200 foot up a cliff and put them in a helicopter, all the ropes and equipment that we used on that had to be thrown away, and we have not replaced that yet because we don't have the money. And at $70,000 a year, we have two extrication trucks that we bought through the USDA, the government, and that's a $16,000, both truck payments is $16,000 a year. Our insurance between both is $25,000 a year. I've already spent well over half of my $70,000 budget and I hadn't even paid the lot bill yet. Yeah, so, you know, we don't expect miracles. We don't expect this to be fixed overnight. You know, we're just here to open the door, to start the conversation, and see where it goes.
Any other questions?
Jeff, the recruiting of people that work with you, is that good? Is there a lot of interest?
It, it comes and goes. Right now, we've got a strong group that's come back in. Things were kind of stale for a little bit. The training waned a little bit. We're back up on our training all last year. We've spent over 11,400 hours just on calls, and we've probably done another 10,000 hours just training, trying to meet all these new standards that the state's come out with. We've got three people that are in EMT class right now that as soon as they get out of that, we can get them approved through the county. That'll give us two more people that'll be available to run first responder calls inside the city. You know, so the interest is there. It could be better. Some of our fundraising activities, the chief before us, Frank Braswell, did a bang-up job. He had a group come in that would do pictures. Well, we can't do that because they have to have the postage for doing all the mailings up front, and that's almost $20,000, and we don't have the money to do that. You know, it takes money to go out and send mailers out to get money back in, and we've got to a point where pay the power bill or try to raise money. And we're just trying to maintain and run our rescue and ambulance services. The first responder stuff, we're trying to do everything we can there. They call and say, we need help, people come. But sometimes it's, you, you're just out of position. But the interest is there. We have people calling every day.
Chief Weller, have you explored the possibility of getting any state grants or is anything like that available to the rescue squad?
Yes, sir. We went to the county a year and a half ago. We got a state grant funded for some Viper radios, communications gear, and it was matching funds, 50/50. We came up with a little over $1,000 and the county had to, we had to go to the county to get that. We came to Mark and Ms. Sandy and the budget at that time, they just couldn't help us any, but we went out and hit the industries. But most of that is 50/50 matching funds. That same grant came available to us this year. I did not apply for it because I knew that I didn't have the money to do the 50/50 match. So that's one of the problems. We're down to the point where we can't even go for grant money unless it's 100%. And there's not much of that out there. It's all matching funds.
Any other questions? We'll take it into advisement and see what, you know, I know you've heard that before, but that's all we can do is talk about it. It's no sense in me crying on your shoulder.
I understand, and, and we're here, like I said, if you all can help us, wonderful. If you can't, we understand that too. We're not going to go anywhere.
I understand.
We're going to still be sitting here running calls.
We thank you very much for coming and thank you for whatever. I know you do a lot of work and we thank you for it.
Thank you for the time to be here.
Sure. Thank you all. Sandy? Right over here to that microphone. Sandy Turner with North Carolina School for the Deaf Foundation.
First of all, thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight and be a part of your council meeting. I'm here on behalf of the School for the Deaf, and I'm here to tell you that for the first time in as many years as I can remember, this is the first spring that the School for the Deaf has not had to worry about closure. And it feels good not to have to worry about closure. And we owe a lot of that to the city of Morganton and the support that you all have given the school. And tonight, we would like to take just this opportunity to say a word of thanks. Mr. Mayor, if you'd come forward, and Dr. Hamer, if you would come forward for the city council, please.
I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Mayor Mel Cohen in sincere appreciation for all you've done on behalf of students and staff at North Carolina School for the Deaf. Thank you. And we want to thank the city council for all your support for the school, and we'd like to present this.
Thank, thank you, Sandy, and all of your crew that are here tonight. I greatly appreciate it. Needless to say, Hugh Blackwell should be here because Hugh is, is holding his end of the bargain up in Raleigh for all of us and all of the schools, and we greatly appreciate that. And also want to tell you that we, the art teacher from the deaf school came to Sharon Jablonsky's office, I believe it was a week or 10 days ago, and they were in a dilemma that, and the changeover from one director at the Arts Council, Burke Arts Council, to the new one, the time period of the art show for, for the NCSD students got overlooked and they had no place to go. And I happened to be near Sharon's office and we got together with her, can't think of her name.
Beth.
Beth. Beth. And we made a phone call to Rudy Bell, and Rudy Bell allowed the use of his building down below Benjamin's, and it'll be great for our community, our city, and our main street. And Sharon did a great job for putting that together, and we want to thank y'all for allowing us to be a part of that. And anything we can do, you know that, we are working diligently on the foundation for, to get the retirement complex to our great community, and we look forward to hearing many good things. And you pass the word on that I mentioned Hugh's name, okay? Because he has done, he, he has, he has done a fabulous job since he's been in the legislature to help us save our school. Thank y'all for coming tonight. I'll give y'all a second or two if y'all want to leave. Thank you. God bless all of you. Next is new business and public hearings, and I'm going to open a public hearing to consider rezoning 1.5 acres of property located at 103, 107 Enola Road from neighborhood business to general business submitted by Dr. Alan Anton.
As you all know, we have been waiting for years, over ten years, for the Enola Road widening project to finally happen, and we now believe that it will. And we feel like that's going to get started sometime in the spring of next year, so that 'll be spring of 2012. During the waiting period, kind of all the rezoning and issues along that roadway have, have been postponed, trying to wait to see what is going to happen. We believe what's going to happen with that, right-of-way acquisition has begun, that the changes in that corridor are going to really change the face of that, that it will be less residential than it is today, that it will become more commercial in nature, more mixed use perhaps with some multi-dwelling family and commercial. The land development plan and what we've done as part of Mission 2030 and relative to that, took that into advisement during that process and felt like this would happen. So what you have before you tonight is, is one of the rezonings, and it has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, by the staff, both recommended. The property was posted, we had first-class mailing sent out, and also two-week advertisement in the News Herald. Lee Anderson is here, can answer any questions in detail about that if you have any.
Anybody wanting to speak for or against the rezoning? State your name and where you reside, sir.
Alan Anton. I reside at 107 Enola, and I have a business at 103 Enola, and I'm in favor for the zoning, which got passed from the zoning board, so.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Womack, and I live at 105 Blue Bird Lane. Please understand that I'm not against anybody's business. My concern is the fact that, my understanding is, is that he's going to, Dr. Anton's going to have a boarding of dogs and animals. I just need some assurance that the animals are going to stay in a confined space. When there was boarding before, we had numerous people come to our home and ask because the dogs got loose. And as a matter of fact, one person was so irate that she thought my dog was her dog. I have Chihuahuas. And as a matter of fact, she almost took my dog. And I don't, I take care of mine, and I just, we just, in our home, would like some assurance that there is safeguard, double fencing or something, because when there was boarding going on, we had numerous occasions where people came down and, to our home, and asked if we had seen their animal. And bless their hearts, I know how attached I am to my dogs, and I appreciate all that, but I want to keep mine. I paid a lot of money in them, and I put a lot of money in their vet bills. And I'm sorry I don't go to Dr. Anton for my vet, but I, you know, I just, I have small dogs, and I want to ensure that the larger dogs are kept, and even smaller dogs are confined.
Doctor?
To address your questions, I guess, if I may, any boarding cannibal veterinary clinic that has animals, that's the biggest worry we have, is someone's loss of a pet. And I don't know what the perfect answer is for that in any situation, except it's, you know, it's virtually impossible to confine the whole building with a twenty-foot fence around it and an opening gate, when every time a customer comes in, you'd have a gate like a maximum security, a prison or something like that. I mean, that's my thought process of trying to make sure nothing gets out. But, you know, you try to do what's very practical and, and cost-effective, and obviously, the last thing we want is for anyone's pet to get lost. But, you know, I've been in practice over there for thirty years, I think, and we've probably have lost, you know, just off the top of my head, I'll only just say about ten animals. But that's not necessarily our fault. In my defense, is that sometimes people drive into the parking lot with a cat in their hands, not in a carrier, and as soon as that cat gets scared, out of their hands it goes, and down the driveway it goes, and, and it's gone. So, how, how can you keep a cat confined? I mean, would a cat stop with a five-foot fence or a ten-foot fence or whatever? I don't know. I mean, you know, that's, those are the things that go through my mind all the time about losing animals. And as far as the animals that are boarded, once we take control of those animals, I don't think we've ever lost a boarding animal, per se, because of the confinement of the building. But I'm not to say that, that, that happens probably at any boarding facility, there's always going to be a chance that somebody's going to get loose. You know, we try our best to try to make sure that doesn't happen, but, you know, unfortunately, either human error or something, something could get loose. But those, those thoughts are always in our mind in the design of boarding cannibals and veterinary clinics.
Just to say this, since you have stopped boarding, we've had nobody come to our home. And the people who would come to our home did say that you were boarding these animals for them, and I'm sorry to dispute you, but, you know, I just want to ensure that when you are boarding, that the animals, there is some protection for the dogs or, because that's primarily what was coming to our home, was people wanting their dogs. And, you know, a double fence or something like that is all we request. I mean, I, I just, I don't want somebody trying to come and get my dog again. And I mean, that almost happened if we had not been outside, and where we live, it's off the main street, and I have my dogs trained to a certain area, and they get punished if they don't stay in their area at the back of my home. And so, you know, a lady came by, and had we not been out there with the dog, she would have taken one of my, my pets, and, you know, that, that's our main concern at my house. And thank you for listening to that.
Ms. Womack, what we can do is our planning department will try to do everything it can to make sure that they build a safe area for them, okay? That you don't have that problem.
Well, I appreciate that, I really do, because like I said, you know, I, you know, I can feel for people who've lost their pets.
Sure.
You know, and I'm sorry, but my, you know, my vet has all my dog's records, and, and, you know, for somebody to almost come up and almost take my dog, you know, and, and as I said, I've got a lot of money in the pets themselves being full-blooded Chihuahuas, but in their vet bills also.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll do everything in our planning department.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, doctor. Okay, any questions of Dr. Anton or Ms. Womack? Okay.
Make the motion to adopt.
Let me close the public hearing. All right.
All right, I'll make the motion to adopt an ordinance rezoning approximately 1.5 acres of property in 103 and 107 Enola Road from neighborhood business to general business.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any more further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is a public hearing to consider a zoning ordinance amendment to permit small business machine shops less than seventy-five hundred square feet within general business zoning districts.
This zoning ordinance amendment was initiated by Barry Stock, trying to look at some uses, some different kind of uses for existing buildings and warehouses that are within general business zoning districts. The Planning Commission has reviewed the proposed ordinance amendment and does recommend its approval. General business areas are usually encouraged to be located away from heavily populated residential areas, you know, and if, if they happen to be adjoining or close proximity, you'll get screening and some other issues relative to that. Can also tell you that the staff concurs with the Planning Commission recommendation and that we did properly advertise the hearing.
Okay. Public hearing's open for anybody that wants to make a comment, yea or nay. Close the public hearing, council.
Move to adopt an ordinance admitting the zoning ordinance in the City of Morganton to permit small machine shops less than seventy-five hundred square feet within the general business zoning district.
Second. Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other items? Consideration of an ordinance to regulate vending on city-owned sidewalks, Sally.
Have had a request today to, to ask you to consider removing that from agenda, from the agenda tonight, to have it discussed after some more research at a later time.
Consideration of a policy governing the issuance of encroachment within public right-of-ways, Sally.
Back in the spring of 2010, you, you adopted an ordinance amendment that dealt with greater control and, and the regulation and the issuance of written encroachment agreements within the city. Since that time, we, we've had a request to take a look at trying to create more practical guidelines, if you will, practical rules and regulations to, to allow folks that are looking for an encroachment to better understand what they need to do for that. Steve has, has drawn this up for you and can answer any specific questions that you might have related to this. Can also tell you that, and the formal encroachments and, and all that we have approved by the city council in, in, in the form of a written agreement, that those are all recorded at the register of deeds office.
This item primarily comes, the mayor asks that we look at a policy. We do have an ordinance. I'm not quite sure what the mayor's got on his mind, because we, we have the ordinance that, in my mind, gives you all the discretion to deny anybody an encroachment if you think that it impedes travel or is unsafe or anything else. But the policy itself does provide directions to someone who might ask the city council, or in fact, the, the less formal one from the manager, to provide them some guidelines so that they just don't come and ask for something that's not well thought out. Generally, it, it's going to tell people that if it interferes with travel, they probably will not get an encroachment. If it's in the same block of other encroachments, such as a deck, a second-story deck, or a balcony down at, down at the, the Old Depot, that the balcony, they're going to have to be designed and look the same, they're going to have to maintain a consistent height so that you just don't get a hodgepodge of, of encroachments of that kind. And that they, they're going to, they're going to have to be set back in some cases. It's, to some degree, it's a first-come, first-served thing, that you can't build a second-story walkway or something if it's going to interfere with the view of an adjacent property owner. It's going to have to be set back, there, there's going to have to be some distance from like encroachments and things of that nature. Just provides guidelines to someone who might seek an encroachment. And it applies to all kinds of encroachments that are of a permanent, more permanent nature. Now, we've got an ordinance that deals with encroachments into the sidewalk for sidewalk cafes and some things like that, but, or when we close a street, that, a festival is in effect an encroachment in public travel. But, but we have other things, other rules that govern those. Here, I'm talking about structures of some kind.
Steve, if we pass this, when there is a request for an encroachment, will it still come to the council?
Well, it depends on whether it's one of these minor encroachments or whether it's a major encroachment. Yes, it'll still, if it's a major encroachment, such as the ones we have granted in the past, Paul Cash has one for his little, I don't know what you call it, the little sidewalk that it.
The steps that come up.
Clark Erwin got one for down at the depot. Murray's has one, a, a second-story balcony.
Jakes.
Jakes.
But Murray's got one for the front.
They got one for the sidewalk. Yes, those kinds will all come to the council. The manager can issue an encroachment. Somebody's going to build a fence over a water line or a sewer line or something like that. Those folks don't normally ask us, they just do what they're going to do.
It's usually there.
But, yes, they'll all, they'll come to the council. Normally, before it would ever get to you, we'd have the staff review it and bring a recommendation to you. And we'd want plans, and we want to see how it looks and how it functions.
So, what's the difference in what we presently doing and what we're asking for
No real difference, because the ordinance already gives the council the discretion to grant or deny, but this sets up guidelines so that people may have a better understanding of what the process is.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to adopt the policy regarding encroachment with public right-of-ways.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Consideration of reward of a bid for de-watering equipment installation and approval of budget amendment, Sally.
You'll recall that several months ago, you allowed the city to enter into a contract to purchase two centrifuges for the improvements that are ongoing at the waste treatment plant. The, the plan is, we've currently purchased the one, and you are now being asked to award a contract for the installation. That has been bid toward the contract to get that installed. This is the part that we agreed to do as a part of the, I can't think of what the thing's called now, special order of consent, special order by consent, and to, to get on with the beginning of the de-watering improvements. We did receive bids, and you have a bid tabulation sheet included in your packet. The low base bid came from Gilbert Engineering Company of Statesville, and the amount is two-hundred-eighty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars. The, the engineer, Black and Beach, and the staff recommend that you consider awarding this contract to the low bidder, Gilbert Engineering Company. There is some contingency dollars, as would be appropriate within this contract, forty-five thousand dollars. And also included, if you decide to award the contract, would be a budget amendment so that we could accommodate for that in the budget, and recommending using retained earnings for this project. This piece is the part that is being done outside of the state revolving loan application. That was the agreement with the state, this had to be done prior to that process.
Okay. Got two motions, guys.
Motion to accept a bid of Gilbert Engineering Company for the de-watering equipment installation project in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Second. Have a motion, we have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration to adopt the water shortage response plan update, Sally.
You'll, you'll recall that it is required by the state that we have a, a local water supply plan, and part of that deals with our response in times of water shortage, and we've had quite a few of those lately. The state has required that we update this plan, and, and they have actually suggested some changes in that process, and after having gone through the, the recent droughts, they have asked that the locality streamline. they have asked that the locality streamline this process to some extent, and so we have responded and, and drawn up the plan that does actually streamline those pages that we used to have, should hopefully make this easier for us in another time of drought to actually carry these out.
What drought, Don?
Yeah, I have...
Uh, motion to adopt, update Water Shortage Response Plan.
Second.
Second, uh, any, uh, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, consideration of utility agreement in conjunction with the South Sterling Street Exit 105 roadway project, Sally.
The other roadway project that has gone off and been talked about for years and years and years. This is back at Exit 105, South Sterling Street. This project is actually going to begin in June of this year. You'll recall that back in, um, December, I think, we approved the, um, you took, the agreement, it's actually a municipal agreement with DOT. At that time, and we had been working on this for more than two years, actually, on trying to figure out how to get the utility relocation cost down to something manageable. Finally, at that time, um, ended up working out with DOT that they would bid and, and do that as a part of their project, that that's how we were gonna be able to get the best deal possible for us. At that time, pre-designed, their estimates were around $255,000. They have now, um, gone out and are in design and estimating, and the total is $449,355. That's for water and sewer line relocation, and some work with electric and cable conduits in, in the area. Part of the agreement when we signed it in December acknowledged that they would bring back this utility agreement to us. Whatever ends up happening, we are responsible for the actual cost. You'll recall that at one point, the estimates were as high as $1.2 million, so this is considerably less than that. The other thing that the agreement allows is payment terms with the Department of Transportation, and we'll be able to make our payments over a three-year period, and that will begin in July of 2012, so it will not be until the 12/13 budget that our first payment is due, so we'll be able to prepare for this in our capital improvement plan.
Better do it before it goes up again.
Yeah, better do it.
Yeah, well, they're, they're getting ready to let, let bids. Of course, you know, they get down there and they find something they're not banking on, it could change again. Same as if we were letting that contract.
Sure. Okay.
I'll make the motion to enter into a utility agreement with the NC Department of Transportation for estimated cost of $449,355 to relocate Morganton utilities associated with the South Sterling Street Exit 105 roadway project.
We have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion of that project? Monstrous. Yes, sir.
I think the staff should be committed for their efforts in, uh, being able to negotiate this agreement with the Department of Transportation, in that we were originally looking at, uh, a million and $200,000 for this project, which the city taxpayers would've had to come up with that, that money, or we'd use that money out of, uh, our, our funds to do that. And the staff's been able to, uh, to negotiate that down to $449,355, which the citizens should realize that that represents a savings of over $700,000, which I think is commendable, commendable to the staff for doing that. So for Lee and, and Sally and the other staff members that, that worked on that, I commend you for doing that. That was a good job, and, and it saved the taxpayers a lot of money.
Yeah. Development design has put in hours, and I mean a lot of hours on trying to get this accomplished.
Okay, we have the motion, we have a second. Right?
Yep, we do.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Last item, consideration of a committee appointment by, for the Board of Adjustment, and we've got, uh, Lee, for you to indoctrinate, uh, Bryant Lindsey, making form of a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bryant Lindsey will start, as quick as you get him talked to. All right, any, um, our first, uh, TGIF Friday night concert is May 6th with, uh, what is it, drop, uh, what's that?
Throwdown Jones.
Throwdown Jones, yeah.
If you've seen the commercial.
Yep.
Isn't it Throwdown Jones?
Anything from any of the other council members? Meeting's adjourned.